It is now 7:00 PM, Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, and I call this meeting into the Board of Education to order. Cindy, would you please call the roll?
Meadows.
Present.
Araladu.
Here.
Gonzalez Thomas.
Present.
Slager.
Present.
Mathis.
Here.
Black. Gilbert.
Present.
All right, next I would invite Danielle Slager to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununder God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to remove or add to the agenda today?
Nope.
Celebrating successes, I'd like to invite Gina Greenwald, principal of Hoover Wood Elementary School, to the called Wellness Wednesday. Welcome, exciting.
Yay. Oh, I'm pretty short. This is just good enough, right? The speaker? Good enough, okay. All right, hi, I'm Gina Greenwald. I'm the principal of Hoover Wood.
I'm Molly Garcia, one of the social workers at Hoover Wood.
And I'm Shannon Brunel, the other social worker at Hoover Wood.
All right, switch sides. So several years ago, we started Wellness Wednesday, really during COVID time because students were anxious, staff were anxious, the world was anxious, and we wanted a way to kind of accept that this was an anxious time, but what can we do about it? How can we help ourselves and teach children that they're our self-calming tools? So we decided to do Wellness Wednesday as an opportunity to help us relax, experience a sense of belonging. We're all in this together. And this helped us make some of our calming tools that we are already using just more accessible to students. So we started prior to COVID using Responsive Classroom, which is very intuitive to what kids need, how we speak to kids, tools that we give them. And so we figured this was just one more layer to place on top of that to really just integrate with our whole staff. And we've been doing it now for...
Since 2019.
Yeah, so for a while.
So what does Wellness Wednesday look like? The best part of Wellness Wednesday is that everyone gets to wear comfy clothes on Wednesday, and I think that's our teachers' favorite part.
Mrs. Agata, would you like to model the outfit? There you go, that's the favorite.
And then during morning announcements, my other favorite part is we do some deep breathing and we get to listen to Mrs. Greenwald take some deep breaths on our morning announcements.
My Darth Vader voice. And the microphone, the kids love it.
And then she also sends, sets positive intentions for the day, just something for us to be thankful for or to think about or a goal to set. Every classroom on Wednesday gets to participate in what we call our Cozy Read, and that was when they just take some time to... Some teachers turn off the lights. They have the fireplace projected on the screen and everybody gets a few minutes of cozy reading. And then on Mega Wellness Wednesday, which is one Wednesday a month, our Cozy Read, they get to read with their grade-level buddies. So 5th grade goes down to 1st grade, for example, 2nd with 4th, and they get to read together. Another thing that's part of Mega Wellness Wednesday is our specials does yoga and music and gym. They do social-emotional learning. So Shannon and I make these presentations and we send them to all the teachers to teach in morning meeting. And we just practice our calming tools and do mindfulness activities throughout the day.
So these are some of the topics that we've addressed during our wellness, our Mega Wellness Wednesdays. We kind of put an emphasis on mindfulness and being in the now, focusing on what's happening in the present and calming our brain and body. And then each topic kind of associates with a different month. This month, we're focusing on gratitude practices and thinking about the things that we have in our lives versus the things that we want or we think what we need. And it typically goes pretty well. And so we thought we'd engage you guys in a little mindfulness activity before your meeting.
Can you click on the link first?
We're gonna do some yoga?
No, that would have been fun, but no yoga today. You're just gonna have to skip this little bit when it comes up.
So... Do you want to do this? I don't mean to do it.
Do it.
Okay. So we would ask the kids then in these situations to take a moment to calm their body, to focus on the present, to put both feet on the ground, straighten their spine. Take a deep breath.
And shut your eyes if you like.
Or you can focus on a leaf falling.
Or focus on a leaf, yeah.
And then you would kind of imagine yourself in a fall outing. Think about what you would see, what you would hear, what you would feel, what you would smell. Take a deep breath in. Hold it. And blow out. Breathe in. Breathe out. And then think about and focus on something that you're grateful for, something that brings you joy, and put that on your heart to have a positive day.
And then that would be it. Just quick, easy, and all kids can participate and all kids can find something to be thankful for. So the kids actually look forward to it. The staff looks forward to it, and we've just incorporated it as part of our routine. And it's something we're really happy with. So that's our celebration for tonight.
Thank you very much. It was amazing. All right, BPS Partners, Drew. Good to see you again, Drew.
Likewise. Can we do that before every board meeting?
I think that's a great idea.
Is that favorable? All in favor, say aye. So I was thinking about it this morning that tonight will be the fifth time that I've addressed you with the Board of Education as the president of the Batavia Education Association. Prior to that, I always made a point to attend as many board meetings as possible, usually as moral support for Todd Swanson. And if I wasn't able to attend, I was usually watching live on YouTube. It might not seem like it sometimes, but a lot happens at these meetings. There's something exciting about board meetings. It's democracy in action, it's problem-solving. It's important, public education is important. These meetings provide you, the board, an opportunity to better understand the inner workings of our district and hear from a variety of stakeholders. But here's the thing, these meetings only happen once a month. Tonight, you're hearing from me, my union brother Kevin Bodderman, I think it's here, there's, probably back there. You can see him on the camera, I think. Our amazing student ambassadors, who I also think are somewhere back there. There they are, packed house tonight. And that's all great, that's all awesome. You're gonna hear from our building administrators and some of our staff as well. That's a beautiful thing. But as you know, these monthly meetings cannot and should not be the only way for us to communicate with the board and vice versa. As I expressed to all of you, after last month's board meeting, I look forward to continued discussions about how the board receives and solicits feedback, specifically from our educators. And it is my understanding that we'll be looking at different ways to connect you with our association prior to next month's board meeting. In addition to that, in case I haven't been explicit enough at past board meetings, my door is always open and I'm a sucker for a good conversation over a cup of coffee or a beverage of your choice. My challenge to the board, which I will extend to district administration as well, is continue to spend time in our buildings, continue to talk to your staff, both BEA and BESPA, continue to reach out to our students. Ask how things are going, ask about our successes and ask about our struggles. If I've learned anything in the past five months in my role, it's this. Being present with an open ear means the world to people. The stronger we make these bonds of communication, the better equipped we are to understand what we're doing really well as a district as well as what we could be doing better. Always learning, always growing. Am I right? On a separate note, tonight you'll be looking at two memorandums of agreement, one with the BEA and one with BESPA. At the beginning of the school year, both administration and the BEA identified several issues that were impacting both students and educators. To address these issues, we did some interim bargaining with administration. We acknowledged each other's perspectives and interests, identified several possible solutions, and worked towards providing solutions that would be acceptable to both of us. When your lead negotiator, the superintendent, the chief HR officer, and the union grievance chair all text you on either Friday night or Saturday morning to tell you that they felt really good about those discussions, you know that we are probably doing something right. That spirit of embracing compromise and collaboration in order to tackle larger issues is a practice that I think we can all commit to, and I'm confident it will also be a core feature for your spring bargaining with the Batavia Educational Support Professional Association. And it's almost Thanksgiving, so I need to say, I'd like to say it with a lot of BA people here today, which is great. I'm thankful to everyone in the BEA for everything that you do for our students and do for each other, and I'm really proud to stand shoulder-to-shoulder with you and represent you. So thank you. Solidarity forever with BESPA. Go Bulldogs. Good night and good luck. Thank you.
Kevin, can you make your way all the way up? Good to see you, Kevin.
This kind lady is my letter, Turner. No, I'm joking. Excuse me, I'm just gonna put these on. I'm gonna read my comments tonight because, as many of you know, if I don't follow a script, I have a tendency to digress. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Bodderman. I'm president of BESPA, Batavia Education Support Professionals Association. It's been another busy month for us, for the officials of BESPA and the organization's members. We participated in the, along with Drew, in the Batavia Inner School Council Meeting on Saturday, November 9th. These are always informative and rewarding gatherings for us. Two BESPA members at Hoover Wood School have volunteered to serve on the panel that will be on the selection or the panel that will be involved in the selection of the school's next principal. Also, the BESPA board has recruited the members who will serve as our bargaining team when we meet with district officials in March of 2025 to work on the details of our next contract. So that was a major accomplishment for us. Also, the BESPA board continues to meet with senior staff here at R-JAC. These monthly meetings, one of which took place today, are productive, they're positive, and we value the good faith and spirit of these gatherings. And all of these, on a personal note, remind me, and I think Drew kind of touched on this, of how important and valuable it is for people just to get into a room and talk face-to-face rather than rely on the vices that our society has come to rely on and which often, aw too often, lead to misunderstanding and animosity. And I can say, from BESPA's perspective, our meetings with the personnel here at R-JAC are so much better because we can sit down in the room together and work out, not so much disagreements, but just iron out details of issues that we have. And again, today's meeting was another one of those sessions that was done in good faith and worked on a positive direction. So that's our report for today. I thank you. And in the spirit that Drew shared, we always enjoy working with BEA and we wish everyone a very happy and wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next are our board student ambassadors, who are way back there, I believe. Zara, Dari, Grace, and Kaia.
All right. Hi, I'm Grace. So we're just gonna be talking about some stuff that's happening in our school and our community from our perspective. Okay, so in terms of sports, we've had a lot of success recently, but wrestling just started up and that's pretty big. Our girls' wrestling program is huge. It keeps growing and that's something to be really proud of. But yeah, so we have a picture. The boys' and girls' wrestling just started. They were at Johnson Mound to do some prep and I saw a lot of pictures of that and heard a lot of feedback. And it's a really great community.
And then last Saturday, we beat Downers Grove North 17 to 7 in the quarterfinals. So we're moving on again and we're basically gonna win state, as that was.
And let me just say, I actually attended that game and the energy was amazing. It was a Saturday, it was chilly out, but the crowd showed up, like the stands were packed. So it was a super entertaining game to watch. I can't wait for their next plays. And our other sports has been doing amazing. Cross-country season has been coming to a strong finish. Boys' cross-country, they just got, I think they got 14th in state, and then girls' cross-country got 5th in state, which is crazy. And a student athlete, Francie, got a new school record. So we've been really sending some amazing trends. So I can't wait to see what sports brings us the next few years, but it's pretty cool.
And then last week, Open Circle celebrated Kindness Day by spreading goodies and candies around lunch. And they also had like little word affirmation. I thought that was really sweet and a good way to spread positivity. And also another thing that's happening this week, but it's not on the board, is that BSU is organizing a clothing drive. So we'll be placing bins and boxes all around school and we encourage students to donate any clothes that they don't use or don't fit them. Specifically, we're looking for things like jackets, sweaters, pants, basically like winter garments because it's getting cold outside. And yeah, we thought that was a good way to have students serve the community by helping people who need clothes.
Okay, and then another club that we have is Youth in Government, and they just went to pre-ledge one. It was at Nequa Valley. And they had their bill passed with legislators, so that was really big. And we're excited to go see them go to pre-ledge in December and then go to state. And they're gonna go to the Capitol and argue for their bill. It's just like a mock bill of something to add into government, but a lot of times that we talk with legislators and we get to find ways to implement that into our real government. So that's really big. And then for the band program, they're having Japanese band students come in December. They're hosting students from Tokyo. There's 150 members from the... Okay, I'm gonna butcher this, I'm so sorry. Inaguk and Sogo High School Wind Orchestra. They're performing at the BFAC on December 18th at 7:00 PM with our high school wind symphony. So it'd be really great to see some community members come out and see this performance. And then, it's also not on the board, but Girl Up is a club we have at the high school and they're hosting their Single Mom Self-Care Drive. It's with Batavia United Way and they're collecting different types of self-care items. So if you want to find a way to get involved with that as a parent, you can look on the BPS 101 Instagram and there's some contact there. But also really encourage your students to find something to donate because it really helps spread joy. And then last year, they collected 57 bags, which is huge, and it keeps growing. So we're really proud of them.
Okay, so Women in Business had this really cool event. They brought in a few speakers and people just went to the... Well, went to that and just learned about like women in business, obviously. And then our musical just finished all 10 of their shows. It was, it was great and it was fun. And yeah.
And then also a shout-out to eSports. They actually just went to state and I think they got 13th at state. But it's really cool to see, like I think it was last year when we saw this club start up and now they're accomplishing some big things. So it's really cool to see that Batavia has a community that can like have some amazing clubs. So that's mainly what we've got for you guys, but yeah, we'll have more updates coming soon.
And we wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, time for a public comment. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Education. If anyone wishes to address the board this evening, please see our recording secretary to submit a form for addressing the board. Please put your full name and address on the form. In general, the board will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during public comment. This does not mean we do not take your concerns or comments seriously. The board values active community participation in the district's endeavors and encourages people to engage with the district using appropriate channels and systems designed with your input in mind. Board members are not involved in the day-to-day operations of the district and cannot engage in district business individually. If you have specific questions or you'd like to further engage with the district, you may submit your question using the link on the district website and appropriate staff member will communicate with you. Our BPS 101 Communications Director, Holly Deitchman, will now explain the procedures for public comment and call up the speakers.
Thank you, President Meadows. Speakers will be called up in order of form submission. We have six. The first form received is the first person invited to speak. When your name is called, please come to the podium so that you can be heard. All individuals speaking will be limited to three minutes. There is a three-minute timer projected on the screen that will start once you're settled at the podium. At any time during this meeting, written comments may be submitted to our recording secretary. Cindy Rodriguez at my right. Speakers should conduct themselves with civility and respect toward others and otherwise abide by Board Policy 8030, Visitors to and Conduct on School Property. Our first speaker is Dr. Catherine Mazurik.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I don't think your YouTube is working. I don't know if it's streaming. Okay, gotcha. Okay, good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Catherine Mazurik and I will be reading a letter to the school board on behalf of my daughter Ellie Mazurik. To the members of the school board, my name is Ellie Mazurik. I recently attended Batavia Public High School and graduated in December of 2023. Currently, I'm attending classes at the University of Kansas pursuing my nursing degree. I'm writing to give my perspective on a Batavia PD sexual misconduct and grooming investigation as well as a workplace policy violation investigation conducted by BPS. I am the alleged victim. I want to be completely clear that I was not a victim of any criminal misconduct or any workplace policy violation, and I would like to express the frustration, anger, and distress that I've experienced because of the way BPS handled this. My mental health, my college experience, and my reputation have all been damaged because of how BPS decided to conduct their investigation. The Batavia PD's investigation was handled in a few days and there was zero evidence of any crime being committed yet. BPS decided to continue their investigation, searching for a workplace policy violation. BPS reached out to five of my closest friends. The friends that agreed to be interviewed were asked deeply personal questions regarding my sex life in order to investigate a workplace policy violation. Questions revolved around who I had sexual intercourse with and if I had any personal relationships with BPS teachers, including intimate relationships. This type of invasive and inappropriate questioning of my friends is humiliating and reprehensible. Everyone was asked about intimate details of my life except me. Because of this, I called the BHS principal and left a voicemail asking for her to call me back. She never called me back. I wasn't being given a chance to provide my perspective and I was ignored. However, a return phone call came a week later after my mom emailed the Chief Human Resource Officer and asked why my call was never returned. My parents had been contacted earlier in this investigation. They were told it was a courtesy that BPS reached out to them. I wasn't afforded the same courtesy despite being the alleged victim. This ultimately made me feel like I was being treated as an object in a story the school was trying to tell, a story in which the school had a predetermined outcome. From the beginning of this investigation, I was put into a situation where I felt as if I was a pawn or a tool used in an effort to destroy someone's life. BPS used me as a key figure in their investigation, but at no point did the school ever offer care, support, or resources that should be given to a possible victim. Why was I ignored? Why was my emotional distress completely disregarded? Why was I left in the dark, given no information, no support, and no respect? This investigation made it clear to me that BPS didn't care if I was a victim or not and it became obvious that I was collateral damage. Well, BPS... My husband is next and he yielded his time.
You can't do that.
Cindy said I can.
What BPS did was not just unfair, it was cruel. Six weeks ago, a police investigation occurred and it found very quickly I was not a victim. But somehow, through the negligence of BPS investigation, I became one. I have spent the last six weeks dealing with never-ending stress and anxiety. This investigation has not only ruined my first semester at college, but it has also left me emotionally scarred. Due to the constant state of stress and anxiety, I have missed over a month of college classes. There were days I couldn't get out of bed. There were days I couldn't eat. I had to drop two courses and I have felt so far behind academically that I seriously considered dropping out of college entirely. My college experience, which was supposed to be a time of growth and opportunity, has instead been filled with dread, isolation, and despair. The damage this investigation has done to my mental health and well-being is something I will carry for the rest of my life. Beyond my emotional health, this situation has destroyed my reputation. The administration's actions have somehow led to my name being leaked to BPS staff. BPS faculty and administrative staff started to stalk my social media. Messages via several social media platforms from current BHS students as well as former BHS students started to flood in. It has become clear that the community I grew up in now views me through the lens of this investigation. I am a subject of gossip and judgment. My name has been tarnished and I have been made to feel like I do not belong anywhere anymore. This entire situation has been a public humiliation for me and my reputation and my community has been permanently damaged. I urge the school board to reflect on the harm this investigation has done, not only to me, but to everyone involved and the community as a whole. BPS has mishandled this situation, start to finish. I deserve to have my emotional well-being and my reputation recognized and respected. I urge that you take responsibility for how this situation was handled and the steps be taken to ensure that no other girl or woman experience this type of mistreatment in the future. For me, the damage has been done, but at the very least, I deserve an acknowledgement of the pain and destruction that this has caused me. As it stands now, no one should trust this administration or its handling of sensitive matters. matters. This destruction is what they have done to a woman who was not a victim. Ultimately, knowing that I was not a victim and knowing the hurt that has been caused to me throughout this investigation, I have reflected on how BPS has trivialized and betrayed what true victims go through. I cannot imagine the damage that BPS would have on a girl or woman who was a true victim of sexual misconduct and grooming. Warm regards, Ellie Missurick.
Our next speaker is Katie O'Connor.
Actually, well, I was gonna have Donna go first. It's on a book that the juniors in Batavia High School. My name is Katie O'Connor. I'm from Geneva. She brought this up to me, and it just made me cry. What these kids are being subject to as far as, from an English teacher, and her name was ****. The book is The School of Good Mothers book, was partnered with another book. It's called The Awakening by Kate Joplin, a feminist, and it was written in 1899. For comparison of the two books, okay, the theme of both books is dark, it's depressing, it's resentment towards males, and it's adulteress. Edna was the main character, wants to find herself, wants nothing to do with her husband except for his money, doesn't want her children. The man she has a summer affair with chooses, he chooses a new married woman every single summer to have an affair with. She was so distraught, she kills herself by drowning. So what does this bring? Our kids, all of our kids in this whole state of Illinois gets crap from these teachers, and I want to know, where's the approval process that needs to be addressed as far as what is, what we are, I'm so upset with this, it's really hard for me to even talk. But this is so wrong. None of this, the teacher should be monitored to make sure that there's appropriate contact. There's no content. This hands down, this is so destructive. And you talk about what I just heard, and grooming? What is this? Why are we teaching kids all this affair stuff and all this? Wait till you hear what she's gonna read from the book of School of Good Motherhood. And the title, The Awakening, The School of Good Motherhood? You would think it's a really good book. It's a ruse. It's depressing. It's disgusting. It's all pornography. Okay, so with that being said, did you know that the suicide rate among teens is growing, and it's getting higher and higher? We have to hold our teachers accountable. And I really mean that, accountable. Okay, some appropriate reading, I went on and I Googled, okay, so what's a good, what are good books for juniors? Okay, I've read half of these. The Call of the Wild, To Kill a Mockingbird, The Kite Runner, which is phenomenal, The Last of the Mohicans, Seize the Day, The Plague, The Bell Jar. I'm just so upset right now, and I'm just, thank you for letting me speak, but we have to be positive for our students. These kids are being groomed every which way with the, you know, and I have, I'm a hygienist, and I see kids, and they just lay it out to me, and I have high school kids tell me what's going on in school. They tell me about the furries, they tell me about the pornography that is rampant. So please, I'm done.
Next, we have Chris Chapa.
Sure.
Sorry if I pronounced that.
I was also gonna talk about the book, The School for Good Mothers, but somebody else is gonna read that, so I'm gonna focus on something a little bit different. I'm gonna talk about ideology that's going on and being infused into our children. Grooming, as she said, takes many forms, right? It doesn't always have to be just sexual. It can be political, it can be for criminal or terrorist purposes, it can be many different things. Grooming is a person of authority, or by age or gender, more powerful than the person they're grooming, and what they do is they lure them in through kindness, through friendship, through all sorts of ways. And then they gradually get them to follow an ideology or principle that they want so that it, the outcome is what they desire, right? Sometimes it's touching and sexual and predatory in nature, other times it's not. A lot of times, there's none of that. It's just an ideology infused into children. We all know that kids don't have the rational thought, the form, part of their brain that does logic and reason, isn't fully formed till they're about 23, four, five years old. So having an adult in a school who's in a position of power infuse ideology in your children that you don't want them to have is wrong on any account, no matter what it is. It's grooming, plain and simple. By law, it's a punishable crime. They're predators. When somebody feeds your children a book talking about anal sex and oral sex, and I'll read it if you'd like, but it's vulgar, it's absolutely vile. Go look up the book, The School for Good Mothers, everybody, and know that a teacher assigned that to your high school child without your permission. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely absurd. Transgender ideology, what is up with that? Having transgender posters throughout the high school celebrating transg-, it's a sickness, it's a mental illness. I'm sorry to tell you. For 30 years, it's been that way. A mental illness, that's how it's classified. If I come into a school and go into a girl's bathroom and say, "Today, I feel like a girl," how are you gonna feel about that if your daughter's in the bathroom? I know my daughter won't even use the bathroom at Batavia High School anymore, and she's a cheerleader. It's out of control at Batavia High School with what these teachers are doing to our children. And somebody needs to take a stand, and it's about time that all of us look at all of these people here and hold them accountable, with your vote, and with your action, and with your letters and words. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Amen. Amen. Next, we have Donna Johnston.
Read the good parts.
Do God forgive me for what I'm about to read.
You need to speak up, Donna.
I will. Last month, when I addressed this board, I was unfamiliar with protocol and unprepared.
You need to speak up.
Tonight will be different. While the book The School for Good Mothers has been removed by administration, this was not done voluntarily. It took the discerning and courage of a 16-year-old student to reveal to her mother its graphic contents. Frida wants to know if Will is using his finger while he's ****. She did, how did she get outside? Aren't there floodlights, alarms, cameras, other guards? You used a condom, I hope. Really? Replies the teen mom, you think I'm that stupid? I ****. His penis is huge and worrisome. She's never seen a penis this large before. Only the tip fits in her mouth. These sexual descriptions go on and on. Now, I ask you adults, did that make you uncomfortable? Then how do you think these students felt, knowing that each of them had been assigned and expected to read the same thing? This is only a sampling. The author also describes the medical team assisting in teen mom's delivery as her torturers, essentially likening them to the serial molester Larry Nassar. I take personal umbrage at this unfair and distorted view of these highly qualified and dedicated professionals, of which my son is one. I have seen and witnessed them saving the life of not only my sister-in-law and her infant, but also my daughter-in-law and grandson's life. Why would this author plant such a dark, frightening image of labor and delivery in the minds of our girls, knowing that billions of women recognize that while no cakewalk, creating another life and giving birth is the one miracle that God gives to women alone, and most readily embrace this miracle again and again? What was her point, if not just to add one more negative stereotype? There is not one single male character in this book that is viewed positively. Will, the guard, sees the youngest girls, calling them, seeks out the youngest girls, calling them feral with endless possibilities. This wasn't in my program, or in my speech. Do you want us to see those girls as feral girls with endless possibilities? Is that how we want to see them, as just fresh meat to be conquered? That is what this book describes, and these young men are depicted in this book as the serial sexual predators. Lost my place. Frida's ex-husband is a white, privileged, self-absorbed, career-focused adulterer who leaves Frida and their infant son for a much younger and physically fit Pilates instructor. What a woke stereotype that is. This book is suggested reading for grade 12 and above, clearly classified for adults due to its explicit sexual content, complex theme, references to racism, drug abuse, and drug dependency, depression, suicide, societal inequities, and the overall overreach by an oppressive government agencies. ****. She opines that upon further reflection, I acknowledge that some parts may be considered inappropriate for some students.
Thank you, Donna.
Exactly which parts were appropriate, I ask.
And our final speaker is Karen McQuillan. Did you finish everything you wanted to read?
Did you get my other paper?
No.
Okay. Here's the bottom.
Just here.
Yes. I just got that. Exactly which parts were. Am I to remind the audience? Thank you, Karen.
Hi, I'm Karen McQuillan. I'm a resident of Batavia, and I stand with Donna and Katie and some of your thoughts and feelings that they shared this evening. So I thought I'd finish out what Donna was sharing with you. She said, "Please keep in mind that the audience of what you just heard are 16- and 17-year-olds." She sought out an author who could bring cultural diversity to provide a variety of perspectives and experiences, lending to discussions in dystopia, dystopian aspects and expectations of motherhood. Why this insistence to focus on this dystopian image of human misery and oppressed societal worst-case scenarios of motherhood? Why this? So then, she may, she might, she wanted to offer some alternatives for true stories, and each emphasizing the positive aspects of family dynamics and motherhood. And she lists some books here. Gifted Hands, the story of Sonya Carson, who herself had only a third-grade education, guided her son Ben from failing grades to eventually becoming the world's most successful pediatric neurosurgeon, the first to successfully separate conjoined twins. Ann Sullivan, mother who is everyone, in every way, to Helen Keller, despite her own visual limitations. And she goes on to list some other books here, but I think all of you in this audience, many of you teachers, and I do commend you, because teaching is a very difficult profession, and our daughter's a teacher, so I have great respect for those of you who put a lot of care behind what you do. But you know, you know from your own experience, that there's tons of literature in this world where we can find healthy subjects, subjects to encourage our kids to be the best that they can be, the best versions of themselves, to understand that there's, yes, there's other people in the world that aren't exactly like them, there's different opinions, but you can do this in a way that helps them to become critical thinkers, that helps them to be people who make good and wise choices for themselves, and to be productive human beings in our society, and not to be, you know, filling their minds. We have so much social media that in a moment's notice, any of your, any of your children, any of the children you teach, they can access all the pornography that they want. That's the world that we live in. And so we're counting on those adults that we trust with our young men and women, our grandchildren, it's the state where I'm in now, to fill them with all that can bring the best out in them, and not to, you know, just reading some of what you heard, think about the graphics in your mind and how you can carry that with you now. I don't even want to read or hear any of this as an adult, but, you know, to think that, you know, kids that are just in their teens, and who knows how much younger this is gonna be passed on to if it's accepted at 16 or 17 years of age? 17, when you wouldn't get into an R-rated movie. So, thank you for the time.
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you to everyone that came and spoke today. Next is our consent agenda. According to board policy, we designate a portion of the agenda as a consent agenda for the items that do not require extensive discussion before board action. The items are generally routine, recurring, and can be grouped together for efficiency. Would you like to lead us through it today?
Absolutely. 5.1 is the approval of the October 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes. 5.2 is our personnel report. 5.3 is our approval of our monthly payroll and bills. 5.4 is the destruction of our closed session recordings from May 19th, 2023. 5.5 is our acceptance of donations. We appreciate the donations from Office Depot, two donations from Castle, and a very large donation from Beefy. We thank all those organizations for that. 5.6 is our approval of our 25, 26 school calendar. 5.7 is the approval of the digital music production course. 5.8 is the approval of our anchor text. 5.9 is the authorization to renew our network monitoring agreement. 5.10 is the approval to renew our student photography contract. 5.11 is the approval of findings of a safety hazard study, and then finally, 5.12 is the approval of our consent agenda.
Sir, anyone have any questions?
I have a question. This is from Mr. Kim. We spoke earlier, but we talked about 5.11, about the methodology. Be able to talk a little bit about what that is for the audience?
Sure. So the safety hazard is a study that's conducted where it's based on a point system to identify sometimes certain things that the district may need to respond to. And so, as a result of some inquiries, we had conducted one ourselves, not have a finding for a need for specific solutions to some of the concerns that were shared, because it didn't meet the point systems requirements. Tony, is there anything I missed tonight?
I would just say, add that the point system is defined by the Illinois Department of Transportation, and it's not one that we have made up, so all the guidelines of the Illinois Department of Transportation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I just have a comment, just kind of about the school year calendar. I know why we have off on Columbus Day, but, and I'm fine with this calendar, but I think maybe we should, I'd rather have Veterans Day off. I'm just throwing that out there, it's my, you know, I think, yeah, that's all. I think we have enough veterans in the district, and, you know, they should be recognized. That's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I'll take a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Danielle, second by Kel. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Arulandu?
Yes.
Zales Thomas?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Sliger?
Yes.
Mathis?
Yes.
Philbert?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Next are reports. Item number one is FOIA reports. Tom, is anything you'd like to bring to anyone's attention today?
We had three reports since the last board meeting, but all three have been provided to the requesters.
Okay, thank you. Tony, treasurer's report.
Everything financially is progressing as we would expect, and the details are provided in that report.
Do you want to get any questions for Tony on that? Okay. Board, any liaison committee reports? Rob, you want to start?
Sure. So for the stipend committee, I guess the main takeaway from the last meeting was that the applications are open for adjusted and new stipends for the staff, so you should have received communication about that, so please take a look and, and follow through if you, if you need to. For the resource responsibility advisory committee meeting, we met earlier this week?
Last week.
Last week, sorry, yeah. Yeah, yeah, last week. And so, went over a few things related to current services offered by vendors to the district, such as the food service, the bus service, and the cleaning services. So we have added, had an update on, you know, kind of the status of those vendors. I guess my main takeaway from that was there was a, a lot of kudos given to our cleaning service, GFS, I hope I got, or GSF, sorry. So, you know, they seem to be, we saw a lot of pictures, actually, that Mark showed us, just doing like an outstanding job around our facility, so, so that was great to hear. And maybe the other thing I'll mention is, and we'll, we'll talk about this next month, I believe, December, the payment processing solution, and Josh, I'm sure, will come with a presentation, but we're trying to get to a system, a one-stop shop, if you will, for fees, and so we're not, you know, dealing with a lot of cash and different vendors for accepting payments for the school. So more to come on that, but we got a preview of that from Josh this past meeting, but he'll present a more detailed overview next month.
Thank you. Anything?
Yeah, so we had the policy meeting, we went over the first reads from last October's board meeting. I did ask about the required curriculum for Black History Month, Native American History, and Asian-American History, and I just asked a general question, which I know it's not up to us, it's up to the Illinois standards, is if they ever think that Hispanic heritage will ever be part of Illinois standards. And everyone was kind of surprised that it's not, just due to the large population in Kane County. And then we just went over the policy, 6.10 is a footnote updated, 6.110 is updated to add English learners, 6.330, we removed or designee, so the superintendent will supervise the process of the election of recipients of awards, scholarships, and et cetera. 7.130, basically moved the last two sentences from the second paragraph to the first paragraph. 7.140, we removed the requirement of signing a consent form of searching the student's car in order for that student to get a parking pass. So they don't have to sign the consent anymore, they'll just get the parking pass if they meet all the requirements, but cars still can be searched if there's reasonable suspicion. Phones cannot be searched, and the footnotes were, footnotes were updated in that one. There was a question about policy 2.270 under retaliation, updated for third-party, and basically third-party means vendors, parents, invitees, anyone that is not an employee of the school district that comes onto the property. We did ask about the flow chart, which is still pending, but we were also said maybe the board can give a deadline to when we want this flow chart done and get presented. So that's something that we can talk about. Me and Aaron kind of talked about, we think that maybe next board meeting is reasonable, because we started talking about the flow chart in August, I think. So we just think that, we know that different board members wanted to see different things, and it's kind of hard to encompass every single scenario, but if we can just get the flow charted by December, I think everyone, again, we can talk about it, or give a consensus on when we would want it, but we feel like, you know, our recommendation would be December. So, that's all I have for the policy meeting. I did attend the BIC meeting, and right off the bat, we started talking about policy 8.025, which is advertising and distributing materials in schools provided non-related entities, basically for nonprofit organizations, and how to reach families that don't have or use technology, and they, you know, we reiterated that our website is translated into 25 different languages. However, PTO boards were like fundraiser flyers versus non-fliers year. Without the flyers, their fundraising went down. So maybe there is a stand, and then, so how to reach those people. Also, they were talking about maybe having a standardized template that all schools use in order to fit all the information needed, so the parents have it, and then maybe just have a quarterly newsletter that is paper with all the important dates that parents have, so then, you know, because I, I know when my kids were in school, I always had, stuck it up on the, it's easy for me to stick it up on the refrigerator so I could see it. So that's maybe something that they'll talk about. They also talked about the school report card, so absenteeism is better, and then out of our schools, we had three exceptional and five commendable, and this is rated on a bell curve, and only 10% of schools can be commendable, that's per Illinois state. Our ELA scores went up, and then we need to just do a little bit better in math, and then we talked about possibly having more dual-credit and career prep classes, and giving middle-school students' parents a roadmap for the classes that their students can take in high school to help get them on the right path of our college starting or the career starting. I think that's it.
Do you have middle school at the meeting?
Uh, no, so some of the parents on PTOs, they have middle-school students, and...
Some of the organizations also span our entire grade system.
So, I think, did I?
I think you hit it all, yeah.
You hit everything?
Well, I wasn't at the BIC meeting, so.
It's a good meeting, you had a BIC. The only thing I would say is, the 10% was for exemplary status, not commendable. No, that's okay, you did a great job, that was, that was awesome. So, no, but the exemplary status, so for us to move from one and seven, right, one exemplary and seven commendable a year ago, now we're at three exemplary, five commendable, is a...
Is a, I, I would argue, everyone should be proud of that work because the state does not allow everyone to reach certain benchmarks and then get considered exemplary. They move the line. I thought you explained it all. Yeah.
And then Platte will meet this Thursday.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. So I'm on the policy committee, and Raquel did a good job of reviewing that. So I'm also in the Hall of Honor, so we have a big crowd tonight. So we had a great class last year, so we nominate graduates, teachers, and friends of the district. Part of the committee that we're reviewing applications for smill to the entire committee. We're going to be doing that on December ninth, so if you have a candidate in mind, I would encourage you to submit that. You can go on the district website to find that or reach out to the R JAC here, and they can direct you to the right resource. And we're hoping for a robust crop of candidates again this year. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I do have one thing to talk about for the insurance committee, the newsletter. Before I do that, Tony, did you, did anything come to mind that you wanted to bring up about the?
We talked about our, our new software that we implemented that handles open enrollment and makes that process easier and how we can better communicate with employees. But apart from that, that was the gist of the.
Okay. So that was the new software that we approved earlier this year?
Actually, it was last year.
It was last year?
Yeah.
The only other thing I want to talk about was Beth Feller. I said, I said. She and her team, I, I believe Josh was part of it as well. They, they implemented a new quarterly newsletter called Money Matters. So they're sending out messages to faculty, and I'm just going to say what it says here. It's in the inaugural issue of Money Matters, the, the go-to source for tips, insights, and tools on financial wellness and retirement planning, whether you're just starting out on your financial journey or you're looking to optimize your retirement strategy. The newsletter is here to help you make informed, confident decisions in your journey. And they, within this newsletter, they highlight a lot of the programs that are available to our faculty and give out very useful information, very useful resources. It's only a quarterly message, so it's not as if they're sending it all the time. And I think it's a real nice benefit, especially right before open enrollment happens. So I just want to call out that I think that was a real nice addition.
Thank you. Danielle?
Equities tomorrow, and CAC is on Thursday, so I.
So next month, do you have a big update?
I will, hopefully. I did want to ask Raquel, because I was at one of the BIC meetings where they were talking about the flyers. So do, was there anything that they needed from the board as far as, as far as policy change?
So that's just it. That's why we're going to look at policy eight point zero two five on our December meeting. We haven't got a date yet for the December meeting. We're still working it out.
Okay.
They have the right person at that meeting.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, thanks.
I was going to ask as well, is there someone for us to see those constant updates? Are you the policy, usually those updates?
Yeah, I mean, yes, there is. I can, we have the agenda, and I will tell you that a lot of the ones are footnotes. But, so I kind of wanted, that's why I kind of wanted to cover, like, basically what changed. But yes, we have the agenda that we can share. And then also, on our website, if you go to the policy.
It's on there.
It's on there, and then it's, yeah, it'll tell you, like, see updated changes if you click on it. And then it'll show you what's going to change.
That's, everyone can see that, yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
So, yeah, if you want to know any of the policies and.
All right. Thank you.
And then real, too, real, going back to the BIC, so when the schools went, each school, PTO went through everything. If, if anybody wants an update on their school, just let me know what their, voice their concerns or whatever, what's going on, what's happening. I can give that to you, too.
Thank you. On your comment about the flow chart? Anybody have any objections with kind of the deadline they proposed of December?
I guess I want to know more about what that, what that means, because I know that, I had some feedback and some questions. So is that just like, are there, are we going to, what does that exactly mean? Are we going to see things ahead of time? Are you presenting something on December?
Yeah, so, great question. Holly and Brad have been able to synthesize all the board members' feedback, including yours as well, right? So we got everyone and shared something. We're going to share that draft, and I can send that out to you within the next several days. And then you'll have that to take a look at, some time to process, and then at the next board meeting, have a discussion.
Do Holly and Brad think December is enough time?
It's ready.
Valid.
It's done.
Okay.
So yes.
Okay.
Okay. One of my questions was if we were going, you're going to present it to, like, BEA, Bespa, other stakeholders, are we looking to do that?
We absolutely can. I mean, it's a communication flow chart that you gave me direction on and gave the administration direction on. So if, before we do anything, we can see what our other stakeholder groups think of its formatting and information, but I guess the thing I'm just reminding you is that this came from a board discussion with a board directive. So that's, so if, if the board would like me to run this past BEA and Bespa leadership, we can certainly do that.
Well, I think, I think that, like, I know one of my questions with the flow chart was, I didn't know if there would need to be a flow chart. Some of the concerns were, you know, for staff and any of the employees to understand, like, what they need to do versus that, and then for our parents and students. It almost seemed like you would need two separate things. So I'm just curious if we can look at it and have our own thoughts, but if the people who are using it, I want to make sure that it works for them versus just us, because that's what it's for. It's for, we're rolling this out for everybody, correct?
Well, I'm just recalling from August and September's board meetings, we had talked about posting this on our website, right? Making it as visible and accessible as possible. We've also rolled out on our IDs various ways for people to report things, right? And then in our signage in our buildings. And then we also have a reporting mechanism on our website. So I'm just trying to put all this together and understand what, what I'm being asked here is that we want, originally, we wanted to show process, but now are we saying we also want people to use it as an actual tool?
I thought that was, was that not the point of a flow chart? Is to use it as a tool?
My original was, I just want to understand the process flow.
Yes.
And then I think you had added, you wanted it to be used as a tool.
Yeah. So why don't we do this, when you guys gagged.
Two flow charts.
Review it and then, and then provide your comments back.
Yeah.
So if that's something that you feel is important to be kind of brought up and discussed, then you can feed comments back, because it'd be good to get them, some comments maybe in advance for discussion, so we can be prepared.
Mr. Kim, because I think most people in the audience probably have no idea what we're talking about, could you just give a brief summary of what this flow chart is and what it's related to?
So the document is essentially steps in outlining how to report instances of bullying, harassment, and discrimination. Then from there, what those steps look like in that process, and then what some outcomes are, or not some, what the outcomes are based on different situations. And then if I remember correctly, Holly, Brad, we have some identification of resources that people may be able to also utilize, correct? Yes.
Yeah. Well, I think if we're, then I think we need a clear answer of who is it for, what is it supposed to do? And that probably would lead us to the.
Well, that's why, so if everybody's got their kind of comments, and that's important, I think then they can report that back to Tom and just copy me so that he can kind of gel that information together, and then we can find out if the board as a whole feels that, is this a flow chart of an understanding of a process or a flow chart to know what, like a, what to do next kind of thing? So I think it's a fair question.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's, if it's done, we can see it.
I mean, it's not going to be done, it's like, it's going to flow and adjust over time, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, I know. I'm saying they've got their version done, so we can look at it.
We have plenty of time, I think, to understand and digest it.
If you guys give me feedback, we'll keep working on it throughout that time.
Okay.
Yep.
And this is something like, again, it's a, it's not a policy, so we can change any, every day and every hour. So it's not something that we have to go down. It's just like, hey, it's a guideline.
Yeah. I guess I just feel like, why don't we get it right, or try to get it as right as possible? And I guess depending what tool we're using it for, when I was reviewing it, there were some questions and some feedback based on it's, maybe it's because I didn't, I had a different understanding of what we were walking away looking for.
And it doesn't mean that you don't have a good idea there, right? Like, you can say that's a comment, and maybe that's like, not the December thing, but maybe that's something that comes out of this process, right? So.
Mine was literally, I just want to know what the process was.
That's where it started, yeah. Like, what, what are the steps everybody goes through?
Resource, which I think is a lot better.
Well, I think when you asked your question, you were asking if people had a flow chart to look at.
Right, yeah.
So was that for you or for the staff?
It was, I guess, for both, but yeah. But you also want it for the students, right? And, and parents and staff.
So then we're asking for everybody, so that's why.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
It probably would be more than one, I would think.